Mary Jo Philbrandt stayed on through the audit and she assisted with finalization of the audit as well as preparing much of the budget book itself. I want to thank her for that. Dawn Traders here tonight. Dawn is our account specialist, accounting specialist, and she not only helped me through the audit and helped with the presentation, she's just been providing me with a tremendous amount of instruction along the way, as well as Lori Weiderman likewise has helped a lot. And then Tanya Hall actually did most of the publishing for the budget book and I want to publicly thank them for that. Okay, so we'll get started. And since this is a hearing, I guess if you have a question and you want it answered, just feel free to go ahead and raise your hand or go ahead and ask. And hopefully I can answer and Dawn can assist and if we can't, we will get you that answer. So our timeline for the budget adoption, back in June, the board approved the preliminary budget to allow us to begin expending funds for the 15, 16 school year. Tonight is a formal hearing. Again, the information that I'm going to present tonight is my best estimate, our best estimate of where we're at with both revenues and expenditures in the budget. Kena and the rest administration is just finalizing hiring. So all of the information we're going to provide today is not final, it's our best estimate, I want to make that clear. And we won't know that information, primarily the revenue side, until that third Friday count is in. And then in October, we get a certification of aid for DPI and we also get a certification of the equalization so that we can set the tax levy. So then, at the October board meeting, we'll amend the budget and then officially set the levy. The budget process. I'm just going to bring this slide up, it's just kind of a review of how we typically go and do it. This time of the year, we're actually in three budget periods. We're finishing up last year's budget, we're working on this year's budget, in another month or two, we're going to be talking about the following fiscal year budget. So it's very typical that we would be in three budget years. What makes this budget unique is we didn't have necessarily even have firm information about the revenue side, particularly our equalization aid in our revenue cap, until after the state passed their budget. So it was late this year. We typically start our budget process with a formal adoption of the budget calendar, usually in late November or first of December. We look at, Dawn does a tremendous job at looking at the biggest portion of our budget, which is salary and benefits. You're going to hear a little bit more about that later, but we do on our salary, teaching staff and administration, we have a massive spreadsheet that looks at every single employee, the benefit package that they're in, and it's a very tight calculation. So we do, she does an excellent job of looking at that portion of the budget. We also, usually starting in, when Mary Jo was doing the budget, usually starting in like late April, she would be asking me, examples of fixed costs would be utilities. Where are utilities going? That represents a substantial portion of our, what I'm going to call fixed costs. We start looking at transportation. Where's fuel going? So we're looking at those kinds of things. We're also looking at programs. What kind of programs are we going to continue? What are going to be new initiatives? And somehow those, we have to work those into the process. And then finally, we have to see if our needs balance our revenues. And it's pretty much continual throughout the year. This is a slide that I want people to understand, it's a real simple slide. The state, through the revenue cap, the revenue limits dictates what we can spend. We then get state aids, and they may be categorical aids underneath the revenue cap, that, and then that is subtracted from what we can spend. The result is the levy, the property taxes. So it's revenue minus the state aids equals what the local taxes, it's that simple. Student enrollment drives the revenue cap. DPI looks at students differently, and each age group of students gets counted differently, and DPI refers to them as FTE on the finance side. So we've got early childhood, those are typically our three-year-olds over at East, they count for a half. Because we're doing parent outreach programs with our 4K, we get to count our 4K at .6 per student, and then we get one FTE per K-12. Summer school also rolls into the calculation where we have, we take the number of minutes of the students, divide that by, and I've forgotten the number, you guys are really familiar with that, and we get to count those at .4 FTE. In your budget book, there's going to be a whole section on enrollment, and it's going to go into much more detail than I have time to tonight. But this is just a slide you've seen before, we've updated it for our estimate for this year. And we're looking at 2,406 students is our estimate for enrolling this school year. I started back in 2001 and we were over 3,000. All right, and I hope, you know, this is an actual, this is what we call the revenue limit worksheet, and it's the actual spreadsheet that we'll submit to DPI. And I just basically want to go over it with you. And I'm not going to go into every line detail, but essentially it's a spreadsheet that on your left-hand side is the worksheet area, that feeds information into the right-hand side. So the first thing I want to show you is this is an estimate, and this is the most current worksheet that is on DPI's website. And you can see that where I've got that circled box where it's the July 1 estimate provided by DPI on what they're going to provide us for the equalization aid. We then look at last year's expenditures, and that's called building your base. And that base calculation, that number gets shifted over, what we spent last year gets shifted over to the right-hand side. We then look at last year's enrollment. So it's a three-year rolling average, and we've got that summer school FTE in there as well as the three-year average. And that determines our per pupil base cost. And normally, in years past, we would get a per pupil adjustment that would expand the revenue limit as a means of inflation. In the governor's budget, to expand the revenue cap, the next line down, there is a zero there. In the governor's budget, that was not, there was no additional money to put in there. So our, this year's base per pupil limit is identical to last year. So then what we do is we look at our, we're going to get our third Friday count, we're going to roll that three-year average in and bring it over. We're going to multiply it by that base revenue, and that will determine what we can spend on the revenue limit, in a very simplistic form. DPI, because we're declining enrollment, they have what's called a declining enrollment exemption. And it's a way to soften the rate at which we decline. So they give us an allocation of money so that essentially, they realize we can't adjust fast enough, and they provide a one-year exemption for that purpose. Then we look over on the other part that enters into it. They get our equalization, our valuation, I should say, of the district in terms of all the real estate in the district, and that enters into the calculation, and again, we won't know that until October. And that drives then the levy, and that's there in the bottom corner. Questions on worksheet? This is a slide that Mary Jo used last year, and I think it's one that's real simple. So the revenue limit is, we're using analogy of a pie. And the size of the pie is really determined by the revenue limit. And whether it's state aids or local taxes, it's the same amount of money. If the state aid goes up, local taxes go down, or vice versa. The important thing to take away here is our pie, because of declining enrollment, is dropping. And this is just a, this is also found in your budget book. It's just looking at revenues per student member on one side, and looking longitudinally on the bottom. And you can see ANIGO would be in the blue, and the state average in the red. So what we can expend per member is lower than the state average. In the governor's budget, however, there was a per pupil categorical aid. So within the budget, there was some talk early on that that was going to be zero. And in our case, that would have meant that we would have been losing funds. They kept $150 per pupil categorical aid in the budget. So it's outside the revenue cap. It's going to be $150 this year. Next year, the biennial budget is already set, we know we're going to get $250 per student. What's changed this year is normally we would get that aid sometime in March. This year, we're not getting that aid until after the school year's over, in the second week of July. And we're estimating it right now, and again, we don't know that number until we get that third Friday count at $370,000. On the revenue side, this is also found in the budget book, there's a little description of what this pie is. But essentially, what does that come out to? 93% of our budget is the revenue limit. And we're looking at local sources for the property taxes. It also includes things like mobile home tax, it includes student fees, admissions, that kind of thing. State sources would be, the biggest one is going to be the equalization aid. We've got categorical aid, we'll talk about in a minute. Federal sources would be things like, we get primarily through IDEA and special ed funding, those kinds of sources. Payments from other districts would be primarily, that's when tuition, when students enroll into our district, so they're open and enroll in, we get payments for those students. The fund balance, that's a one-time use of $100,000 for the after-school program, along with grant carryover. So let's take a little closer look at revenues. And I don't know, can you see that slide or not? Okay, I'm just going to go over some of the highlights. In terms of revenues, property taxes, we're estimating $8,627,000 in property taxes. Let's go down. I was going to read all these off, but I don't know, it might take a little while. We're showing $275,000 open and roll in. We have transportation aid, if the board members remember what we budgeted for transportation. The contract with the bus company is about $1.3 million, it's a little over that. We're showing transportation aids of $123,000. In the governor's budget, there was an increase in high-cost transportation aid, and I believe it went from, and Dawn, maybe you know it, I think it went from either $250 or $275 per student for any student that lives more than 12 miles away from school. Let's look at, let's see if I can find it down here. We've got a, we've got an aid in there called poverty aid, and that came out last, last week. The number I have here is not correct, it was based on a number prior to last week. We're getting roughly $160,000 in poverty aid. The poverty aid is inside that revenue limit calculation. So what it does is the state is going to pay a higher portion because we're considered a higher poverty district, and it lowers our property tax. It doesn't increase our ability to spend. Medicaid reimbursements, we've got an estimated $125,000 of Medicaid reimbursement. Those are services we provide for children for special ed that are reimbursable through Medicaid. Those services could have been provided a year or two ago, and we really don't know when we're going to get that payment. But typically, we estimate that, and because it's a payment that was outside of our current fiscal year, we're required to enter it as a revenue in our general fund. Any other questions on the revenues? On the bottom there, we've got grants, Title I. Other grant funding would be Title II and Sage. Carl Perkins is a tech ed grant that we get for career in college readiness in tech ed. And what else have we got? I think that's it. Questions? On the expenditure side, 76% of our budget is salary and benefits. We're in the people business. Purchase services are just what it sounds like, they're things we purchase. Primarily, we see it on the facility side. We see it with our, our biggest purchase item is probably transportation. It includes things like, we purchase electricity and gas and utilities. It includes things like snowplow. Non-capital objects are things like curriculum materials, software for instruction. Capital object would be things like computers, or in Jake's case, building large capital projects. And then I wish you could see this too. Again, it's a breakdown, and this, this slide should be familiar with the board members, because this is something that you get as a, as part of your monthly, your treasurer's report. So if I have specific questions, I can certainly take them. Would you like me to go down and explain them, or are you good with where we're at? Michael Shaken is at, he's good. Anyone else want me to go over them? I'd be happy to. Expenditure highlights. And in the budget, we've got built in currently, right now, $215,000 in maintenance projects. And that will include things like engineering services, as well as, as part of that money's. We've got $167,000 built into the budget for technology. And specifically, we've got about $80,000 designated for the continuation of the Chrome initiative. Staffing changes to highlight, we, and I don't certainly want to discount any of the hiring that was going on, but this year, we've added a half-time K-12 literacy coordinator, that's included in the budget. And included in the budget was bringing Glenda Davis on as a full-time principal at North. We've entered into agreement with NTC for dual credit business courses, that's in the budget. Then the remaining items are still pretty fluid. There's minor allocations in these areas for capital equipment, that would be, again, for additional computers or furniture needs of staff. We've got monies in there for professional development, curriculum adoption, textbook adoption. And then we've also included the CPI of 1.162 for salary increases, that's built into the budget. These last couple of items with the capital equipment, professional development, and the curriculum adoption, the replacement, we won't get those final allocations into that budget until we know exactly where we're at for the third Friday count and the equalization aid. Okay? This is a slide I don't expect you to read, but it's some of the initiatives that this budget supports. So we've got the PBIS, we've got professional learning, continuation of professional learning communities, providing instruct, teaching instructions for co-teaching in the classroom, both the new math programs at the middle school, or the elementaries in high school, and then our literacy program. And again, we're contributing, we're, the 21st Century Grant Program for after-school is sunsetting this fiscal year, and we're going to supplement that budget with $100,000 from the general fund. The budget last year, I just want to bring it up with some of the items that were supported. In addition to wrapping up the roofs at the elementary, we did roof replacement at Central Office and at the high school. So the high school right now is currently under, totally under warranty. Jake and his crew did an abatement, final abatement at Crestwood, so that all the asbestos tile is out of that school. And we had the mold remediation earlier in the summer at West. His crew did seven classrooms of either carpet or tile throughout the district. We had a big wall cavity study get started, where we've done, I don't know Jake, maybe a quarter of it or a third of it at the high school. And then we did some repair of masonry and the brick on the chimney end of the high school. And you'll learn more about the maintenance projects later in the fall with Jake at his presentation report. This is a real simple slide, it's also when you're in the budget book, but it's, it's looking at our, just a wide, broad picture of special ed. And all I'm trying to show is, if you look at the top line, it's, it's looking at Fund 27 and what we spend in Fund 27, and then looking at the aid that supports that funding. And you can see that, you know, it's hard to see on the bottom, but it's 26% funding for that program. The rest of it comes out of the general fund. You're welcome. Is the door open in the back? Can someone open the door in the back and, In your budget book, on page 32, they're going to go into more detail about post-employment benefit. For the board and the community, basically back in '12, '13, we used to have a defined benefit. And we no longer have that, where teachers could retire, get early retirement benefits for health insurance, and that ended this past fiscal year. We've now, now got a program where we've set up health save, individual health savings accounts, and that, it's at the board's discretion whether or not to add to those individual health savings accounts. So in summary there, on the bottom bullet, we've got roughly, as of today, the balance is $1.2 million, with just over $1 million allocated to individual accounts. Some of the assumptions built into the budget, and I'll just read over a couple of them. We're anticipating a general fund balance at the end of this fiscal year of about $5.3 million. In our model with PMA, we're anticipating a decrease in enrollment of about 47 students. Open enrollment will have an also, will have a big impact. We're estimating right now 38 open enroll in, and 110 open enroll out, for a difference of 72 students. We've got an estimate of state aid of a slight decrease, down to $14 million, 14.64 million. I've talked a little bit about the revenue cap, full harmless calculation, and we're estimating that to be somewhere around $300,000. We're estimating a decrease in the overall, decrease of 2.4% in the levy. And again, I've talked about having the CPI included in the budget for staff salary. It also, the budget reflects a reduction in required withholding or contribution for the Wisconsin State Retirement System that takes effect into December. It's going down by .2%. So in the end, we're estimating that for a tax bill on a $100,000 home, the overall budget will see a decrease of about $34. Want to spend just a minute, and again, this is in the budget book, talking about community service. The community service fund, Fund 80, our district uses it to help support the Aquatic Center. This program gets audited every year by our independent auditors, and the state keeps tightening, tightening up the requirements of this program. Fund 80 is designed solely for community use. It's community, community use of programs and community use of facilities. If the community, if we don't, if we would eliminate this fund, we don't get to keep the money. The money is solely used for the community, in this case, to help support the Aquatic Center. This year, that, that amount was in, I asked the board last month to increase that allocation from 220,000 to 270, and that is built into this year's budget. We're currently starting, beginning fund balance of just over $2,300, and we anticipate that that will be gone by the end of the year. This is the budget we put together last month for the Aquatic Center. It hasn't changed, so the board has seen this last month. Questions on community's money? So this chart is essentially a five-year look at where we are with the levy. And if you look at back in '12, you can see we were at 8.1. That was the year, I believe, and Dawn, maybe you want to comment there on that. I'm trying to think, I should say that's the general fund. Let's look down at the total levy. We're at $9.8 million on the total levy back in '12, and we're currently at 9.1. We have a 2.4% decrease in the overall levy from last year. That includes the Fund 80, increase of $50,000. The budget book goes over Fund 38, prior service debt. That was, refinanced that, I believe it was in 1112, and to lower that interest rate that we were paying. And it was for prior service obligations to the state trust fund. That will, that Fund 38 should be over in about nine years. And we're currently paying $261,000 towards that prior service debt. The decrease is also based on a 1.5% increase in the overall equalization value for the district, and that's reflected there in the, one, just over $1 billion. Questions on the levy?
On the prior service, yeah, I noticed it's going up. Is that supposed to go up this year until we get to that magic number?
Yes, it's going to go up, it's going to go up in increments similar to that number.
For the next eight years, right?
For the next eight years, and then we're done with it. Correct. And we refinanced that, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and it's, if there's detail in the budget book, and I can actually direct you to page...
It's page 30.
It's on page 30, and it goes into the description of describing what the interest rate was prior to refinancing, and it's laid out there for you. Okay? Other questions on the levy? And again, this is a similar slide that I showed you with the revenue behind each student versus equalization, essentially our tax rate. And again, ANIGO is below the state average. And when I look at that, and if we compare that, particularly per student, those expenditures would be about 1.2 million additional dollars that we'd have to spend on education. So even though it doesn't look like much, it means a lot. I want to spend a little bit of time talking about the fund balance and short-term borrowing. In the next meeting, we're going to ask the board to approve some short-term borrowing, and I thought we'd spend just a little bit of time talking about how fund balance plays into our short borrowing, short-term borrowing. On this particular one, I want to concentrate on essentially why institutions have fund balances, and I want to look at the first three. We're going to talk about cash flow, unplanned or planned expenses, and insulate against instability on your revenue side. And in particular, when you have declining enrollment, that's what I would consider instability on your revenue side. As we drop, and we don't know how far we're going to drop, we need to be using and allocating fund balance knowing that we are going to decline. We'll talk a little bit about unplanned expenses or planned expenses. An example would be what we did last year, where we decided there was a need at the elementaries to invest $400,000. It's nice to have that fund balance to be able to... It's nice to have that fund balance to be able to draw on that and do those kinds of projects. We did it again this year, we had the sunsetting of the Twenty First Century Grant, and we went ahead and asked the board to say that is a valuable program for our students after school. We had fund balance enough to at least cover it in the next year. And I'll get into cash flow here in a second. This is what I would say is kind of like an example of your personal budget at home. The, the red line would be your wages, and if you work a forty-hour a day job, your wages are pretty constant. The grayish line would be your expenditures. As we get into the heating season, Christmas time, your expenses go up. And hopefully, you're good at budgeting, that what's up above and what's down below match, so at least you, you're able to do a little saving. What I, what I did on this slide is I just looked at our, this is documents that we use for short-term borrowing. It's looking at our monthly bank balance. Now, it's not coinciding with a weekly or payroll, so it's, it's not detailed, we're just looking at the, the high-level ten thousand foot view. And all I'm showing is you can see that we have two significant dips in our cash flow. And we are, in, in most cases, at or right below the line when we're looking at November, and then again in May. And our expenditures, seventy-six percent of our budget is pretty much over twelve months, where we got salaries coming out twelve months regardless. And on the bottom of this one, I've got a little chart showing when we're getting our revenues. And that revenue stream is going to change a little bit. On the equalization aid, we got a little true-up in July for last year's budget. We know now that that per pupil categorical aid, that three hundred and seventy thousand that we're estimating, that isn't coming until the second week of July. That tax levy in August is last year's final payment, and represents thirty-five percent. And then you can see between, on the tax levy side, you can see the big gap between the next installment in January and February. So it's a matter of when we're getting our cash, is why we need certainly the fund balance for cash flow purposes to buffer that deficit or that lack of funds coming in, and also reduce the amount which we short-term borrow. So this year, DPI through the school finance team has come up with these new undesignated fund balance amounts. And the purpose of these fund balance amounts is basically, as a board, we can decide to allocate monies for, and these are the names that they've chosen, and that revenue stabilization. We could allocate, knowing that we are declining in the future, we could allocate funds, and it's not a formal restricted funds, those funds can go in and out, but it's a way to communicate to our public that we know our revenue stream is not stable because our enrollment's not stable. And likewise, we could, we could designate the working capital needs fund for cash flow purposes, and it's a way to communicate easily to our public what we're using our fund balance for. It's simply not cash in the bank just sitting there. This is just a slide I put in there, and I talked about those three budget years. PMA come this fall, we'll be talking to them, I'm sure, in October, and working into November throughout the rest of the year, looking at projections. And we're projecting five years out, and looking financially where the district will be in five years. So tonight, we're asking the board to adopt this budget with general funds, twenty-six million, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars, and in all funds, thirty million, four hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Final questions?
I'm giving you as a recap of the work of Ray. Put them all in their work on one page so they can- I have added to their work, concept number ten and concept number eleven. And we can add a whole lot more if someone has ideas. I would encourage them to different to me, and I can go with a fourteen-inch page if we have to. But this gives you a visual look at what they had put on a number of pages. The, I'm also working on a long-range plan. As I see it, it will be done in a similar format, and it will be using enrollment as a driver for, for long-range plan. And I'm not finished with that. I, I didn't get a chance to proofread all of this, so when you find a mistake, like, don't shoot me, so if you've got questions, we can deal with them later, or at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to do this.
Yeah.
Geez, Roy, you screwed up our number, and we just added ten and eleven today in our meeting, now we got twelve.
It's night writer.
Apparently, you were not listening to me?
I was not.
That's all right.
You're fine. That's why I'm a night writer.
I, I, we have not implemented the quiet system yet. There, that will be a policy adjustment.
There we go.
Nonetheless, Ray, thank you for that information. We appreciate it. Moving right along then to item four, new business, report of the policy committee. Jim?
Okay, on August eleventh, a meeting of the policy committee was held at High School IMC. The meeting was called Order at seven o'clock by myself. Committee member presidents were myself, Jeannie Long, Andy Marion, Tara Giselle. Other board members present were Mike Golding and Jessica Mead. The administrative president were Don, Don Childs and Tim Frunty. And there were no public comments at that meeting. And we forwarded for the meeting tonight, three policies for a first reading. First one is three forty-two point six, individual modification of student program of instruction.
Remembering Tim at the meeting, the schools were not inserted in that document at that time, were they since been put in there?
Yes. They have been placed in there, and you'll notice that it says that the performance report were held, withheld by state law. The legislature, in two separate actions, I don't know whether they had a long nap in between or not, but in, in one legislative action, they required us to report, school report tires to parents, at the start of the school year after July first, two thousand fifteen, which would be this school year, and then in another legislative action, said that those reports had to be withheld. So, work to be issued.
Okay, and the next new policy was three forty-two point eight, full of new policy.
Just those two things, designates a coordinator for District Five Oh Four Plans, and the position of the Director of Student Services. However, that role is larger than just student, Five Oh Four Plans, it's also employees. The role does not entail simply taking complaints and doing investigations, yet entails initiating action where appropriate.
Any other questions on that one? Okay, and that's first we found, and the last one for a first reading tonight, was a new, new policy, six six five, fraud prevention.
And this is a recommendation from the WASB in their policy review, to simply reaffirming that we comply with the federal government's bulletin, basically, preventing fraud prevention abuse.
Okay, any more questions on that? Then we have three, three policies will be, that's for the first reading tonight, and will be brought up next month, for the second reading. So the next policy committee meeting will be on Tuesday, September eighth, and September eighth at seven o'clock, so, and the meeting will adjourn at seven twenty. All of this for us.
Any questions? Thank you, Tim. You know, at this time, there won't be any actions because it's all first readings. And we'll move on to item four B, community relations communications. Many, Jim?
Well, we had a meeting last night, and that was August twenty-fourth, and we called Order about six thirty-two, and we discussed some of the, I think, community, community outreach that we're doing, Jessica and Patrick, and we all had some comments. We talked about the fair, some of the things that we talked about at the fair, things that were handed out, we had the math program that was being handed out, you know, I, myself, you know, we stopped, asked people if they had any people, any kids in school, that'd be one way to get them to come over and talk to you, or something like that. We asked grandkids, you know, what they kind of old they were, and some would say, well, we do, but not in this, this, you know, it's a, it's a public forum, you know, and just, just to get attention and things like that. I know Mike said he had about twenty-five to thirty people come in at his lodge there one day, and other people too, so we thought the fair booth turned out to be real good. Appreciate the UAS committee for helping us out with that, and putting that going, and staffing it, and putting it up, so, thought that was good outreach, and in that respect. We talked about more, other outreaches in the, in the future, we talked about the farm we had last week, some of the comments, you know, that were made, and some of the things that brought up, you know, people, the turnout, we felt it was really good. So, we think this, we're doing a pretty, we think that we're having a pretty good turnout. We're going to, we wanted to increase that outreach, of course, the committee talked about going to, again, making outreach to positive church places, service organizations, want to regroup and kind of focus on some other places that we can get the community involved. Scott said he had been in a couple of city, city council meetings, and a ton of rolling meeting, and I guess any of us members that were, are in different districts, we could, township, we could probably target some of their township we exhausted. We also then had, I think Andy made the comment, he was here present with us. We have nine schools and nine school board members, so we have a, kind of like an adopt a school, a board member for each one of the schools, and so we have a little discussion here as to find out who's going to be appointed to each of the respective schools.
What would that, what would that mean? Like, what I mean, like-
Well, uh, different things, like possibly, on the first day of school, the school board member would be present to greet the kids and the, and the parents and the teachers on that day, as they come to school in the morning. The next thing that, if there was a parent-teacher organization meetings, and the other kind of in-service type of meetings, where they would like to have a school board member present, or it would be good to have a school board member present, they would, principals would inform us of that function going on, and we could be, make it appoint to be at those meetings at that particular school. Who could we decide, we've got, I don't know, I wouldn't know what you know, it's about- Andy was west.
No, I said I would wait until-
Andy deferred to what was left over. I took the high school, okay?
Mike says it was high school, he thought Jeannie would be north. Jessica, did you take with you, did you meet up to him over that day? He wasn't here, so we decided we give him-
Spring Valley.
Yeah, Patrick is Spring Valley, plus a view, plus a view, and-
Crestwood.
No, Tara, we were going to assign you to middle school, because you're right there. Did you agree with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
And, you two, you go. Was east and Crestwood?
West.
West?
Well, Andy was west. We just-
Andy was kind of a-
Yeah, but we're getting, we're getting a west kid who's on that side of town.
Jim, what do you want?
Oh, thank you. Don't matter.
I went to Crestwood, Crestwood, definitely east or-
That's fine.
Okay. What do you got there, Ryan?
So, two of those.
You get it from last night? Jim, most of it. So, and that's pretty much where we ended. Our next meeting will be September sixteenth, we will be meeting in, at Spring Valley, so we can avoid the blizzard we had last year.
Oh, Jim, can I just add one more thing on that school thing? That's not my idea, that's Roy, Roy's idea.
You made it public.
I made it public, okay, it's Roy's. Thank you, Roy.
Yes, so the next meeting will be at Spring Valley, we'll start a rotation of all the schools again, that'll be six thirty, September sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Thank you everybody who attended last night, everybody who did the, the fair booth and stuff like that, how all was born, and things, appreciate it.
I like the, Bobby was the one that did it.
Did she?
Yeah.
No. Thanks. Questions, Jim? We all have our schools. And Anita, Noel, I will not be wearing my round suit, because you got to put somebody in there that can jump around, and that is going to happen.
We'll get you someday.
Yeah, go on. I got my Jordan Nelson. So, a long time ago. Okay, good enough, Jim, thank you. Let's move on to item five, staff reports. Looks like we have a contract to, for athletic training that is going to be at no additional cost in the district?
Yes, there will be no additional costs, and consequently, there's really no formal board action necessary to be taken. Hospital does have a quid pro quo with us, they provide trainer services, we provide facilities for them to run this course.
So, Tara will be signing off on that, just wanted you to be aware of it, and the public. Okay? Any other questions on that? Staffing updates. Looks like we've had a few things go around and around. Tina, would you like to indulge us with the wisdom?
We will be approving the ones that we have all on the board ready for higher, the open positions, we still have our secretary position at West Elementary, the instructional coach for the district, and kind of specifically at Southern View, and a certified occupational therapist. So, we'll go down there, and we'll see that.
Do, do we have application spending, or?
Yes, we do for all three positions.
Okay.
Yes, we did interview for the instructional coach today, another one set up for tomorrow. The West Elementary Secretary of Position closes at that month, September third, and the code, we've got someone in mind, I just got to do some background, and I'll let you check some.
So potentially by end of September, we'll have all the positions down?
Hopefully, yes. We did have to put a long-term sub in at West Elementary for the third grade position because we got to do a late resignation, and so we're just going to kind of hold off a little bit, the long-term sub, and then we'll get them that semester.
Good. Any questions on that? Okay, thank you. Item C, facilities update. You should jump in here, sir.
Certainly. We met with Myron Gray today. We began, well, first of all, we added some options. We began the process of looking at what would be potential advantages and drawbacks of each of the concepts, and we'll be bringing those forward for the committee of the whole meeting on the eighth, and some deliberation there as to where we might see ourselves going thereafter. Myron will begin putting some cost parameters, and I want to emphasize parameters, these are not hard costs, they are ballpark figures, and will be presented in ranges of cost because of the variability and the nature of things that are done within those facilities options. But to begin to get an idea of, of what the costs are going to look like, and what the advantages and disadvantages are going to be, so we can begin to do some cost benefit analysis, and we will hand those ready, and we will be reducing things to a handout that can be distributed at the World Cafe on the fifteenth, so that people have something they can bring with them, and we'll be putting that up on the web and Facebook and Twitter. And I don't know if anybody-
Questions?
Jake, if you want to add. We will have Myron Gray here on the eighth, and he will also be here to work with us on the fifteenth at the World Cafe. on the fifteenth at the World Cafe.
They are now kind of a little more up to speed on the, after the open forum that we did, yeah, they're a little more up to speed on some of the pulse of the community a little bit.
Yes, Bobby actually managed to tape all of those note cards and get them completely put in those documents that you have as of today and they will be posted on the web and we will be sending them to everybody participating in that.
So, everybody will be on the same page?
Yes.
Good. Anything else, more questions, comments? We should be good to go then. Okay, we will move then on to item six A, the facilities survey proposal. So, we'll be looking for motion, please.
Preliminary comment, maybe to put some context around this. Last spring, we had school perceptions do a community-wide survey. This is a follow-up that's specifically focused on facilities and will be addressed to the public in general, but will be targeted as well for those people to participate in the forums that the district is holding so that we are getting feedback from people who actually know what the concepts have been and what the discussion has been around them and have some, you know, data and informational background behind them and in order to respond to that survey, we will begin working with them on this, some of the board approves it within the next couple of weeks and our target is to have it out shortly after the end of October, in the early November.
Now, let's see, we can make a question. I've got one question and maybe I just, because this is, you know, obviously the
same company, this is similar than what we did last time when we had this. In the phase four, where it talks about, you know, plan of action, the last point says work with district to establish a realistic data-driven plan of action. Did we really get that from them last time? I don't, maybe I'm.
Last time, they gave us two proposals. One of them entailed developing a plan of action, that is not the one that was approved.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So, with this one, they would be doing so, okay.
Yes, they would, yeah, giving us assistance in that regard.
I don't think we should be having discussion on this until we have a motion.
We should have a motion.
I'll go ahead and do that. I move the board authorize the administration to enter an agreement with school perceptions to develop and conduct a survey of the community's preferences with respect to facilities planning to be conducted in fall of two thousand fifteen and in an amount not to exceed ninety-nine hundred dollars.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Gelsel, second from Ms. Lee, that the board authorize administration enter an agreement with school perceptions to develop and conduct a survey of the community's preferences with respect to facilities planning to be conducted in the fall of two thousand fifteen and in an amount not to exceed nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Now, further discussion.
What is their planned range of mailers this time?
What is what, I'm sorry?
The planned range of mailers. I think the last time they said they targeted fifty-five hundred. Do we have like a draw of fourteen thousand address within the district?
I'm not sure what we have in the way of addresses in the district, quite frankly. They took mailing lists from sources that we've used in the past for mailers in the district, which was the only information we had available to us. There is only really one other option and that can be extremely cumbersome because it's different depending on what post office you work with, but if you have a bulk mailing permit, you can address it to resident and then it goes to every single resident in the entire community, but you have to manually sort it yourself into, it's all on zip code, but it's into the actual post routes, postal routes, particularly the rural routes. So, you've got to identify which ones are rural route one, which ones are rural route two, and to be candid with you, we don't have the personnel and the manpower to be able to do that here. We'd like to be able to get it into every home, but more important for us, I think, is getting it into those, the hands of those people who actually interacted with the board and participated in the discussions because those are the people who are informed.
Don, for this amount of money, I think they could count this out.
What's that?
I say, for this amount of money, I think they could count this out, the postal routes.
They don't, they don't do that kind of work very obviously and, and they went, I mean, they went and went with, who do we use, Bobby, do you remember? In the spring, we did the actual.
Clermont.
Clermont, okay, okay.
Clermont printing will work with the post office too.
What's that?
Clermont printing will work with the post office as well.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
It is, I guess it would depend, yeah, I mean, it would take a little bit of time, but yeah, you can go online and look at your specific routes and pick out which routes and then it gives you a number on there and then Clermont printing works with you on printing to make sure that it's the right dimensions and.
Yes, I think they have it. You remember, Tim, we did that one? I'm pretty sure we did.
Don, I'll just have my head over.
But that, that survey, remember, really only asked one or two questions about facilities. It was very broad and general and the other questions really were about other things and consequently, the information, the feedback came back, sixty percent of the respondents totally wanted us to do something about the schools, you know, in the way of consolidation. That was really the only facilities related item of survey. So, but, you know, I think it's important that we get this in the hands of just about everybody we possibly can and we'll certainly work with them to see to it that that happens. I don't know that I can sit here and guarantee you that we're going to make a hundred percent coverage, I just don't know. We'll get as close to it as we can.
It takes four hours, or I should say four people, two hours to divide everything up for bulk mailing, for every address.
Not having done it, I wouldn't know.
I did it twice. So.
I appreciate your insight, Don.
I'm curious about the, are we planning on, you know, so this would be a survey with a significant number of options, would we also be planning on a survey later on that would be more broadly to the community with, say, the two or three options or are we not considering that or are we considering both?
I think this survey is aimed at after you as a board have worked through, winnowing down your options so that you downroll.
Down to a few?
Yeah.
Then it would seem like it should be more, you know, it wouldn't necessarily focus on the people who know so much as like the people who vote.
No, we're proposing to broadcast it through the community, but targeting those people who have been participating in discussions.
What does that mean, targeting, like making sure they get them, but making sure that everybody else gets it too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you send one to every, every resident, postal resident, that means that some people will get two if you do that because they were targeted, but we effectively did that last time and it'll be the same this time because you can either take it by paper, on paper and return it or you can take it online. And, and they do have a way of sorting out anybody who takes it twice. They have a way of coding so that this can.
I'd like to see a broader range like we're discussing here. There are bulk mailers, I never investigated, but I looked at the Yellow Pages and Wausau for business type of thing and there are people who do bulk mailings and group like post office, do it by route. I know Clermont printing has done that, they separate by the routes and do all the bumbling for it, so I think if we are, if we're going to do this, we want to incorporate much wider and broader range of mailers than just fifty-five hundred.
That's fine, I, I need to go back and look at those numbers, but absolutely we can get it to every single one. I think the fifty-five hundred reflects the number of responses you got. I don't think that reflects the number that, excuse me, that were sent out. I think they managed to cover virtually everybody in the district with the, with the survey, but the response rate was fifty-five hundred people about that number.
Seventy percent.
Yeah, yes, seventy percent.
Seventy percent, which was a number that was a little higher than what they normally would see, the response rate, so. Okay? Any other comments, questions?
So, my understanding is like this will be sent out after some of the options or you may don't send the options.
Yeah, I think we will have school perceptions present at the, either the September committee or the whole meeting or the September board meeting and they can tell you a little more about their process and their procedures, but yes.
Would it be possible to have Myron Bray write up these same types of questions and then just hire a bulk mailing company to do that?
Myron Bray doesn't have the expertise to develop a survey instrument and I wouldn't want to touch the trust, frankly, the results that they might get from the questions, that 'd be like me doing it. You don't want that, trust me. I, we're much better off using a firm that does this kind of thing routinely, that's done through school districts and other public organizations, really not just throughout Wisconsin, they're also in other states and highly credible and I find that the results are very reliable, so I think this is money well spent, quite frankly, you get the feedback you get. And I think you'll get a higher rate because of the focus of it, I think you'll probably get a higher rate if you turn it down a little.
Anything else? Yeah, I would remind everyone that the motion is that the board authorize administration to enter an agreement with school perceptions to develop or conduct a survey of the community's preferences with respect to facilities planning to be conducted in the fall of twenty-fifteen and in the fall not to exceed nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Everyone clear? Yeah? Anybody else with any questions, comments?
I feel comfortable to wait on the board, please.
Well, if we're going to do it, we have to improve it now so they can start it. I understand. The survey itself won't be conducted until we're farther along in the planning phase.
Okay. Anyone else? There is nothing else, Bobby, go, call vote, please.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Tara Gisela?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Chansema?
Yes.
Jeannie Long? Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jess McGee?
Yes.
James Gilf?
No.
Mike Tolday?
Yes. Motion carries on the seventy-two vote. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Next up, item six B, seclusion restraint report.
Karen is here and you have documentation in your packet.
Yes, you have, thank you. You have the documentation for the seclusion and restraint report. This is a result of Act one twenty, one twenty-five, which gives an outline of seclusion restraint and each year the board must receive data as far as this seclusion restraint, so you'll find that in your board doc and I would encourage you, if you have a question to ask me at a later date, as far as any data, this is not something that is put out in the public, but it's provided for board use.
Before we move on to further discussion, we'll be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board accept and approve the seclusion and restraint report for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year.
We have a second, a second. The motion from Mr. Mary, second from Mr. Fuller, that the board accept and approve the seclusion and restraint report for the two thousand fourteen, twenty fifteen school year. No, further discussion.
What is the sponsor school for the debt?
It's, it's a state school run by the Department of Public Instruction for students who are severely hearing impaired.
We have students.
We have a student, yeah.
And that's why, that's the question.
Yes.
Look, as far as anything else goes, folks, as Karen indicated, this information regarding anything else is not discussed and is confidential, so if you have any particular questions that you would like to ask of Karen, you can give her a call. Okay? As I said, any other questions regarding the report?
Yes.
You can ask them, but you've got to be careful how you ask them.
Well, it probably ought to be noted in too that there's also state Wisconsin schools who are basically impaired and I don't know whether we have students that are not, but the state has open schools and functioning for many of the years.
Okay. Anything else? Great, we can do this one on voice vote, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Item six C, medical advisor agreement.
This is an uncompensated position for our health services and Dr. McKenna has graciously agreed to act in that capacity again.
I might add, if I may, that we've updated the medical advisor agreement to be re-plepped of the DPI recommendations so that we're in line in.
Why?
The lines, the domain lines. We are very grateful to Dr. McKenna's contribution, he works very closely with our district, their statistics.
I take it that the state stuff is more about the duties and responsibilities portion of the business?
Yes.
Okay. You're looking for a motion, please.
I move the board approve the appointment of Dr. Patrick McKenna to the uncompensated position of medical advisor to the district.
Okay. The motion for Mr. Mary, second from Mr. Shaw, is that the board approve the appointment of Dr. Patrick McKenna to the uncompensated position of medical advisor to the district. Any discussion?
I'd just point out, I've been doing it for part of this year, but Dr. Hagerne has been doing it prior to this.
Circle. No problem. Everybody have any more questions, comments?
We want to suck a pin. Many Dodgers, I know, minions are never free.
I'd ask for a second opinion, but we don't.
It'll probably cost you.
All righty. Hearing no further discussion, we can do this on a voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, Dr. McKenna makes it. We will go to item six D, withdrawal from the local government property insurance fund. I think we'll start with the motion and then we'll discuss from there, please.
I move the board authorize the administration to seek property insurance from providers other than the local government property insurance fund and exercise the resolution of withdrawal if a more advantageous alternative is available.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Mary, second from Ms. Gelsel, that the board authorize the administration to seek property insurance from providers other than the local government property insurance fund and exercise the resolution of withdrawal if a more advantageous alternative is available. Discussion.
Here's, here's the conundrum and Tim, you're going to have to help me out on this, but the fact is that several years ago, two years ago?
Yes.
The local government property insurance fund that insures against fire and hazards, properties owned by local governments, which would be the. properties owned by local governments, which would be the O nine institutions, and that particular organization had a very large, I hate to bring it up, but the top of budget fund balance, and the governor and legislature, in their infinite wisdom, decided that they shouldn't have that fund balance and ordered them to actually refund sizable amounts of money to the school districts around the state of Wisconsin, which, because they'd been directed to do it, they did, and then here we are, two years later, they're broke because of claims against them that their fund balance would have covered had they been allowed to maintain it. And so, we are sitting here with the very real possibility of seeing a literally skyrocketing insurance premium by staying with the fund that probably would exceed the decline you saw in the stock market yesterday and today. And so what we're asking for is flexibility to shop this around and try to find the best premium we can get to insure our rural properties particularly, which is a problem because we have facilities outlining that aren't necessarily covered by fire protection districts, and insurers don't typically like covering facilities under those conditions. Have I got it, Tim?
Pretty close, and I can give you some numbers. We are working with, for our liability and workers' comp and now property, we work with consortium of school districts, and the consortium is called CERMAC. And a year ago, our property insurance was roughly, let's just use the round number, sixty-five thousand. This year's renewal is in excess of about ninety-five thousand, so that's the spike. CERMAC, the consortium, is out seeking bids as a consortium for property insurance, and because we're in the local government insurance fund, we have to have a formal resolution to be able to withdraw, and the consortium is advising that we ask the boards to do that. Whether we exercise that option or not will be based on the premiums that we accorded.
Tim, we're also in the municipalities involved in this as well.
Our.
This wasn't just, this wasn't just school district, this was small towns across the state of Wisconsin that were affected by it.
Correct, but our consortium is just school district.
But as far as this with the local government property insurance, it's with.
Municipality.
Municipities across the state of Wisconsin.
Right.
Okay. Any questions on this, Andrew? Done hearing them, we would be looking for a roll call vote, please.
Tara Gisler?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Jensenoff?
Yes.
Jeanne Vaughn?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
James Schultz?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
And Mike Foley?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. We will go on to item six E, agreement with the State Community Programs Office, Langley County Boys and Girls Club from Millsville originally, twenty-first century.
This is our partnership with the Boys and Girls Club for the middle school after school program, and we're asking for renewal of that agreement.
I move the board approve the renewal of the agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Langley County for services in the middle school after school program at a cost of $2,200.
Yeah, a motion for Mr. Mary, second for Ms. Jensenoff, that the board approve the renewal of the agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Langley County for services in the middle school after school program at a cost of $2,200. Questions, comments?
Just that I, I don't have said this before, that I'm on the board, the Boys and Girls Club, I don't obviously gain anything personally from this, but still, it's known.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your input.
What is the walking school bus program? What kind of, what is that, what kind of services are they, can you kind of describe?
During the question, sorry.
The walking school bus.
What is the walking school bus program and kind of what, is that, is that the specific service that they're providing, providing $2,200, or is there other activities?
There's a number of activities. I believe the walking school bus would be the fact that they do come over, what the Boys and Girls Club does for the after school program is, if you remember, our after school program has two components, a academic component and then an enrichment component, and the Boys and Girls Club provides extra enrichment activities. Some examples would be arts and crafts, they go over to the club and use their multipurpose space for some activities, they do photo clubs, cooking classes, those sorts of things. The walking school bus would be, I believe what they're referencing is the fact that members from the Boys and Girls Club come over, get the students, and walk them to the club, and also walk them back afterwards so that students aren't walking on their own.
And that's, Jim, that's on the attachment, on number two, they kind of explain that, it is basically what my answer.
Where's the attachment? Wait, so we can, wait, simply it's part of this part?
Yes, yeah. And it's at the conclusion of the, of the program that's at the middle school.
They do provide, they provide enrichment activities that leave four days a week for us.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Karen, Bobby, roll call vote, please.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Jensenoff?
Yes.
Jeanne Vaughn?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
James Schultz?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Tara Gisler?
Yes.
And Mike Foley?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, we are now on to item six F, reaffirmation of the adoption of academic standards.
I move that the board. Go ahead. I was just going to explain that this, too, is a new statute that the legislature passed with, or just in the wake of the planning budget, requiring school districts to report to parents the standards that the school board has adopted, so.
I move that the board reaffirm its adoption of the Common Core standard in English, language, arts, and mathematics, and the Wisconsin State standard in science and social studies, and authorize the administration to so inform parents with clarification that the standards are outcomes to be achieved and are not the, and are not the curriculum or the curriculum content.
Second. Motion by Mr. Fuller, second by Mr. Mary, that the board reaffirm its adoption of the Common Core standards in English, language, arts, and mathematics, and the Wisconsin State standards in science and social studies, and authorize the administration to so inform parents with clarification that the standards are outcomes to be achieved and are not the curriculum or the curriculum content. Discussion. Hearing them, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We will go on to item six G, the NTC Partners Program Agreement. Okay, anyone else?
Throw off your first? Yeah, it's just, it's a request to increase instructional aid time for our Partners Program, which basically is high school equivalency program, there's a work component, and we're asking for additional instructional aid time for those students on the job. And that's going to result in an increase, I think, Tim was at the original about forty-four thousand and there's now a hundred fifty-five.
Looking for a motion, please.
I move the board approve increased instructional aid time for the NTC Partners Program, bringing the district's cost to a total of $55,733.
Motion for Mr. Mary, second for Ms. Long, that the board approve the increased instructional aid time for the NTC Partners Program, bringing the district's cost to a total of $55,733. Discussion.
Is the aid part-time, part of this, or is it increasing his time?
I'm not at all clear on that, Scott. I don't know how much time the aid was actually working previously. I'm guessing it probably was, I don't know, time is needed, do you know?
Yeah, Mr. Fredrickson would start at eight and leave approximately at two o'clock. Our students report at eight and leave at two thirty, so he's leaving in between instruction time, and he, his contract is three days before our school starts, where our teachers are five days at this point, so the overlap is kind of unclear, and it's hard for Mr. Boebert, Mr. Fredrickson, the father, when he's not there, when, he's only there when the students are there.
It's also some additional time at employer sites, may I say? Any other questions? Hearing them, roll call vote, please.
Scott Jensenoff?
Yes.
Jeanne Vaughn?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
James Schultz?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Tara Gisler?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Jensenoff?
Yes.
Mike Foley?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. We will now move to item six H, materials for the construction class house. I think you all have a chance to look at, remember, they're out there, so they'll tell you, so I would entertain a motion at this time.
I move the board approve the bids of the following suppliers for the materials necessary to build the construction class house. Will now lumber, building materials, Heinz and plumbing and heating, plumbing supplies, Willhalm lumber alternate, windows, doors, cabinets, vanities, and countertops, Shane's drywall, hanging, taping, and spraying, and Jerry Toney Electric Center electrical supplies, totaling $42,464.72.
Second. Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Mary, second from Dr. McKenna, that the board approve the bids of the following suppliers for materials necessary to build a construction classes house. Willhalm lumber, building materials, Heinz and plumbing and heating, plumbing supplies, Willhalm lumber alternate, windows, doors, cabinets, vanities, and countertops, Shane's drywall, hanging, taping, and spraying, and Jerry Toney Electric Center electrical supplies, totaling $42,464.72. Discussion.
I guess questioning on that, what's the difference between the alternate and the other one, though, do you know what?
Yeah, what, Willhalm lumber was proposing is vinyl windows, and they've had very good success with some, particularly in the small home where you might have humidity issues. So, the alternate was for supplying vinyl, and the instructor would like to try it.
Okay.
Mike, what I would like the board to look at is in the bid tally, I believe Vandercoy...
You are correct.
Yes, we were just picking on it, but, thank you. Yeah, the, in the bid tally, the lower bid was Vandercoy Brothers LLC in La Salle, and it was $300 less, approximately. And then I believe Vandercoy's has done it for the last couple of, I mean, they've been a little bit in a couple of years.
And the motion does indicate Shane's, correct.
The motion does indicate Shane's. At the time, the motion would make Shane's, who's the only good example.
So, we would need to amend the motion to, from Shane's drywall to Vandercoy.
Yeah, so is, is Shane's more vocal than Vandercoy here, or not really?
I would consider them both vocal, I mean, Shane's is out of Elko, and I believe Vandercoy's is out of, yeah, sorry, Mr. Mary.
I would amend my motion to include Vandercoy Brothers for the drywall.
Second. Well, first, we'll vote, if there's any other discussion, we need to vote on amendment first.
Yeah, and I also assume that that against the grant total, but I don't know that number.
I would indicate to you it probably doesn't, because it appears that the grant total, as noted on the sheet, with, with Vandercoy as a low bidder, is the same amount as the motion.
Okay.
So, first order of business is to vote on the amendment to the motion to change from Shane's drywall to Vandercoy Brothers. We'll do that, this will call this one.
Jeanne Vaughn?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
James Schultz?
No.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Tara Gisler?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Jensenoff?
Yes.
Mike Foley?
Yes.
Okay, and the amendment to the motion carries on vote of eight to one, so the amended motion will now read, board approve the bids of the following suppliers for the materials necessary to build the construction class house. Willhalm lumber, building materials, Heinz and plumbing and heating, plumbing supplies, Willhalm lumber, alternate windows, doors, cabinets, vanities, and countertops, Vandercoy drywall, taping, or, excuse me, hanging, taping, and spraying, and Jerry Toney Electric Center electrical supplies, totaling $42,464.72. That is the amended motion. Further discussion now on that.
Yeah, Jerry, electrical supplies bid, is that just, just the supplies, or are they doing the wiring as well?
What we've asked the Electric Center, the bid included a design fee, so that they would essentially take a floor plan and do a layout of where the electrical outlets and the various three-way switches should be mounted, and then they're also going to be providing instruction, so that the work is supervised and can be approved by the building inspector. And that's true to the coming bid as well.
Anything else? Okay, then we will vote on the motion as an end, roll call.
Jeanne Vaughn?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
James Schultz?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Tara Gisler?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Jensenoff?
Yes.
And Mike Foley?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item six I, CNC plasma.
I move the board accept the bid of Lincoln Electric in the amount of $13,068.72 for a plasma cutting machine.
Second. Mr. Mary, Mr. Fuller made the motion, and second by Ms. Long, the board accept the bid of Lincoln Electric in the amount of $13,068.72 for a plasma cutting machine. I would assume that this is probably for, at that area?
It is actually, Anita might know the details of this one, but it's actually some grants they received, Anita, through NTC for, for, when the, when the kids get, I want to call it, through accredited certification.
Yeah.
So they earn a certification through the high school and NTC partnership, and then they provide a grant back for those students.
Exactly. What is in plasma cutting? I really want to know.
It cuts, it cuts metal.
They would tell me it cuts plasma, because I just.
I cut metal, like a torch.
Okay. When I'm picturing it, it's not, yeah, I knew it wasn't right, sorry.
I think Jake can interject something.
First noble one involved in any event, so.
Okay.
Yeah, the CNC is obviously the automated part of it that does design it automatically, and then the plasma cutting is today's modern torch that you heat metal and cut it, but it's a little more accurate, cleaner.
So I'm picturing like your actual cutting plasma, which I know is wrong, so, thank you.
Tell me if I'm right, it superheats the area around it, and the plasma portion is, it literally liquefies the metal or cuts it clean.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Must pay attention, I'll be. Yeah. Anyway, any other discussion?
This is a new one, or is it an additional machine, or something replacing?
It is, it is a new one.
Really? Replacing a little?
We have a regular, we have, actually have two plasma cutters, but this is a CNC version of it.
I would assume the plasma cutters we currently have are the hand, are the handheld version? Okay, anything else? Bobby, roll call, please.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
James Schultz?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Tara Gisela?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Jensenma?
Yes.
Jeanne Vaughn?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Mike Foley?
Yes.
Very good. All right, motion carries. We are on to item six G, large format printer.
I move the board accept the bid of Up and Running Solutions in the amount of six thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars for a large format printer.
Second.
Okay, motion for Mr. Mary, second from Ms. Gelsel, that the board approve the bid of Up and Running Solutions in the amount of six thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars for a large format printer. Discussion.
This bid was for a refurbished printer, were the other two bids also for refurbished?
They were, they were not, Andy.
No.
And my understanding is, when they talk about a white format, this is, I believe, thirty inches, it can print thirty inches wide. Or is this just graphic art? Here? So this would be like a large scale printer for doing prints?
Posters.
Posters, blueprints? I, I think more along the poster variety.
More, okay.
Any more to it?
Tim, I, I don't know that.
I, I want, yeah. Usually on refurbished stuff, you'll find the belt award for a year.
The low, the low bid was recommended by the department chair, so obviously they would have reviewed them as a group, so it's their recommendation.
Another discussion. Tim, Bobby, more, again, roll call, please.
James Schultz?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Tara Gisela?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Jensenma?
Yes.
Jeanne Vaughn?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
And Mike Foley?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Item six K, donations. Can I have an outline of it? So be looking for a motion. Here, please.
I move the board accept the following donations for the Phila Backpack Program with its thanks to the donors for their generosity. Johnson Electric Coil, two hundred dollars. Colange Credit Union, two hundred dollars. Peace Lutheran Church and School, one hundred twenty-three dollars and one cent. Antigo Lions Club, five hundred dollars. Antigo Optimist Club, one thousand dollars. Community Association of Retirees, two hundred fifty dollars.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motionance by Ms. Gelsel, seconded by Mr. Mary, that board approve, or the board accept the following donations for the Phila Backpack Program with its thanks to the donors for their generosity. Johnson Electric Coil, two hundred dollars. Colange Credit Union, two hundred dollars. Peace Lutheran Church and School, one hundred twenty-three dollars and one cent. Antigo Lions Club, five hundred dollars. Antigo Optimist Club, one thousand dollars. And Community Association of Retirees, two hundred and fifty dollars. I really don't think there's any strings attached to any of this, but do you have anything other than a voice vote? So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Wonderful, thank you. And we thank all those organizations and businesses for their generositys. It does make it a whole lot easier for that program.
We will thank them in writing.
That will work. Okay, item six L, employee handbook revisions.
I move the board approve the revisions of the employee handbook and adopt the handbook as revised for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Mary, second by Ms. Gelsel, board approve the revisions to the employee handbook and adopt the handbook as revised for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year. I think we all had an opportunity to go over it after Tina gave us the information last time. Any questions on any of it? Hearing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Well, we are now on to item seven, personnel. We are looking at a single resignation, so we'd be looking for a motion at this time.
I move the board accept the resignation of Jolynn Shreffer, contingent upon payment of liquidated damages, and authorize the administration to determine the separation date.
Second.
We have motion for Mr. Mary, second from Ms. Gelsel, that the board accept the resignation of Jolynn Shreffer, contingent upon payment of liquidated damages, and authorize the administration to determine the separation date. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We accept the resignation of Jolynn Shreffer. The administration will do their business. And we don't have any retentions to discuss. So we will go on to item seven C, new hires.
I, I move the board approve hiring of the following individuals, Clint Nicholson, head custodian, Diane Johnson, music teacher, Craig Furch, school psychologist, Mindy Han, first grade teacher, Deborah Waldvogel, special education instructional aide, Adam Cohen, agricultural science teacher, Heather Spencer, food service, Brenda Bear, regular education instructional assistant, Abriha Beanfang, Jonas, special education teacher, Denise World, special education instructional assistant, and Jason Waldvogel, special education instructional assistant.
Second.
Okay, the motion from Mr. McKenna, second from Ms. Mead, to approve hiring of all those people that he just named.
Good job.
Didn't think it was necessary to go back through, my name was throwing me off anyway. So, a discussion.
Is this Adam Cohen, is that replaced with someone?
Yes.
So that you should be able to bet?
Yes. Yeah, there's a matter of some health insurance premium that we need to recover from what the big managers-
So, let me start to make sure we're on the top of this.
Any other questions? Hearing done, Bobby. One more time with roll call, please.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Tara Gisela?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Jensenma?
Yes.
Jeanne Vaughn?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
James Schultz?
Yes.
And Mike Foley?
Yes.
So we remove all those hires, and that now brings us to an end.
An end motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.